I'll make the motion for approval for the lakefront soccer sign located at sixteen forty-five Volker. Industrial Parkway for a fifty-two square foot building, non-lit building, mounted sign. Ask for numbers.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well said.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Second item on tonight's agenda, birch song and Conifer Cove subdivision located on the west side of Webster Road, just north of the Bird Sanctuary Trail. Applicant Grove Underhill LLC is requesting sketch plan review associated with the proposed nine lot, single-family residential cluster subdivision on a five-point-five-five acre parcel in a single-family residential district under sections two sixty-nine dash five and two ninety-six dash twenty-seven of the code of the town of Webster.
And now we're in business.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Vars from BMI Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of the landowner and applicant Grove Underhill LLC. As mentioned, we're here this evening to present to you and discuss with the board a sketch plan for a proposed single-family residential development, a single-family residential subdivision of five-and-a-half acres in a residential R-three zone. As I mentioned, the property does consist of about five-and-a-half acres, and it's located along the west side of New York State Route two fifty. It occupies about two-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of frontage along the state highway, and it's north of the town of Webster's conservation lands, conservation area that encompasses the Bird Sanctuary Trail. Property is bounded to the west and to the north by existing single-family residential development, Conifer Cove Lane, Holly Road, and Foothill Circle Town Roads. The property is currently vacant and is characterized by successional vegetative growth. At the west end of the property, as we mentioned, Conifer Cove Lane, which is a town road, dead ends at the property's west property line, and it does have a temporary turnaround at that dead end. The owner applicant is proposing a residential subdivision of these lands for a single-family residential lots. And this would be achieved through the extension of Conifer Cove Lane to the east. This would complete the street extension out to Webster Road. It would provide an alternate means of access to and from the neighborhood. And it would propose single-family lot residential development consistent with the existing single-family residential neighborhoods that exist north of the Bird Sanctuary Trail lands. But the applicant is proposing this development as a cluster subdivision pursuant to town law section two seventy-eight and town code section two ninety-six dash twenty-seven. As part of that process, we have prepared for the board's consideration, and as required by the town code, a conventional plan layout to determine the allowable density of the five-and-a-half acres per the R-three zoning district. We did this through two means, both identified within the code, and came up with a yield of nine single-family lots for the five-and-a-half acres. One means of doing that, and this was provided in your application package, is the preparation of what is known as the conventional plan, a plan that is prepared where the lots do all conform with the R-three zoning criteria. And in this case, the R-three zoning criteria is a minimum lot area of twenty-two thousand square feet and a minimum lot width of one hundred feet. The conventional plan that we provided to you illustrates how those nine lots could be configured, including the extension of a town road, meaning the requirements of the town road of a sixty-foot right-of-way that would encompass the public utilities to serve the development. The other means of determining density within the clustering provisions of the town code is spelled out in town code section two ninety-six dash twenty-seven D, which is basically a calculation process you walk through based on the total project area less any lands that need to be set aside, whether it is for public right-of-ways or any natural feature protections. Those calculations were provided within the letter of intent, the application letter submitted to you, and they're also identified on the cluster plan, they're spelled out. They're spelled out on the cluster plan also, and that calculation showed a maximum yield of nine-point-three acres, so obviously we round down. So through both of those mechanisms, we were able to determine that the allowable density on this property is nine single-family lots. So the applicant is proposing a cluster subdivision plan of this property, and this plan, we do believe, meets the intent of town code section two ninety-six dash twenty-seven point B, which spells out the intent of cluster subdivision design within the town of Webster. And that intent spells out that cluster subdivisions are... are... The intent of them is to encourage flexibility in the design of a subdivision, to promote appropriate use of land, facilitate adequate and economical provision of streets and utilities, and to preserve natural and scenic qualities and open spaces. We believe the proposed clustering plan we've provided to you achieves this, and this achieves it in several ways, which we did spell out in the application letter. This includes the fact that we provide an adequate and practical approach to stormwater management on the property by placing it within a half-acre set-aside parcel to consolidate all of those practices into one... onto one parcel. We also provide lands along New York State Route two fifty to... that would accomplish a couple things. First of all, it does provide as a... or serves as a buffer between the state highway and the residential neighborhood to the west. It also, through an extension of the town lands to the south of the property, would allow an extension of town lands up to what would be the extension of the Conifer Cove Lane right-of-way, such it would provide the ability to extend the Bird Sanctuary Trail, or I guess a link that would allow residents of Conifer Cove Lane in those neighborhoods to have direct access to the trail. So it's taking... The clustering allows us to take advantage of the presence of the town open space to the south of the property, the presence of the trail, and be able to expand and encourage access to those lands from the existing residential neighborhoods through the provisions of the town land extension up to Conifer Cove Lane. The lot standards that are proposed with it as part of the cluster subdivision is a minimum lot width of ninety feet, a minimum lot area of sixteen thousand square feet, and ten-foot side setbacks. The lots would still maintain the R-three zoning criteria of fifty-foot front setbacks and fifty-foot rear setbacks. For the nine lots proposed on the cluster subdivision, the lot widths range from ninety feet wide to one-hundred-and-twenty feet wide, and the lot sizes range from sixteen thousand square feet to twenty-four thousand four hundred square feet. So that averages out for the nine lots, an average lot width of one-hundred-and-five feet and an average lot area of nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-five feet. The cluster plan as proposed, though, also remains consistent with the existing single-family residential development in the immediate area, and specifically on Conifer Cove Lane itself. The Conifer Cove Lane, as extends... as it extends to the west and terminates in a cul-de-sac, has lot widths that range from sixty-five feet wide to one-hundred feet wide, and has a minimum lot size of eighteen thousand square feet. The cluster plan that we have proposing provides a logical extension of Conifer Cove Lane consistent with the existing development within these neighborhoods while also providing the benefits that we've mentioned here this evening and spell out for you in the letter of intent or application letter. All nine lots would be served by public water and public sanitary sewer through extension of existing facilities that are located within the Conifer Cove Lane right-of-way. As we mentioned, we would consolidate the stormwater management facility in the northwest corner of the property. And also, the proposed access point onto New York State Route two fifty does have adequate site distance per the requirements of the New York State DOT. A couple last things. We did receive the MRB group letter dated November twenty-eighth. And we received that on Friday. We did provide this morning written responses to those, but I basically highlighted our responses already in the presentation this evening, which is our belief and our justification that the application of the clustering provisions of the town code is appropriate for this property, and that, as proposed, it does meet the intent of the town code for clustering. So as such, myself and actually Mr. Mitchell Brodsky and Jeff Bell, both from Grove Underhill LLC, are here to answer any questions, but we are looking to discuss this with you and look for the support of the board for the clustering of the subdivision and providing us the necessary direction so we can proceed with a preliminary application in the near future. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We do have both the conventional and the cluster drawings in front of us. And this was discussed pretty much at length at the PRC meeting last week. I think the consensus actually was to build it under standard-sized lots at that meeting. Are you giving reason why it could also be otherwise? The downside with the... With the conventional, where you're showing detention in the back of a couple of the lots there, that would have to be changed. It has to be on one parcel, as opposed to carryover on the two. Similarly, you have... It was what you're showing on your... on your cluster development, all on one lot. I don't really know, and again, this, at the PRC, that parking area you're proposing there, that wasn't really too well accepted by everybody at the town.
And that's fine. It was just an option that if the Parks Committee or Department, excuse me, had any desire for it, that it would be made available by the developer.
Now, the original development, Conifer, is that a... Is that a cluster? Those lots are cluster development in there, or is that standard?
We did not find... We have not found the record of what... how that subdivision was approved, whether it was approved under standard zoning at the time or whether it was a cluster subdivision. I do not know that answer.
I think that was standard development back then, standard-sized lots. They both are, obviously, projects, a project that's been anticipated because the road did end. It was a temporary turnaround going over to Webster Road. So, you know what? Let's do this. This is a... This is not a public hearing. That's the next meeting would be. This is just a sketch plan, which preliminary is where you can speak. But apparently, you have a bunch of neighbors that are there, right? So if you want, we'll open it to the public. We'll open it anyways and let you speak, but just, I'm gonna ask you, please, just keep it short. Don't go into whole, lengthy, you know? If you wanna do that, I was gonna ask you, sure, go ahead up and you can speak. Just give us your name and address.
My name is Hugh Lee.
No, no, you have to put on the microphone.
My name is Hugh Lee. I am a resident of Conifer Cove Lane, and in fact... So obviously, I am not as familiar with many of the questions you might be looking at from a technical or engineering or buildings side, but I would note a couple of things. One is that our concerns, we do have a lot of water coming into our house to begin with. So obviously, we would want to know what effect this kind of development... What effect the development, as well as what effect the reservoir or holding pond being there would have on our residents, as well as some of the other people next to us, because I know that the people behind us would also have that same concern. The second thing I think that we'd be concerned with, and it sounds like you actually addressed a little bit of it, is I think there is probably a technical plan that would be acceptable, and then there's like more of the cultural feel for the town, and we would probably be willing to speak to that. I think one of the concerns that we have is we wanna make sure that if we've been a standard development, that it conforms to that same kind of feeling. I think, I just heard that the parking is out. We were worried about the parking type of situations there. So more than just the structure, obviously, it's how it affects Webster community and the culture that's all around that, and particularly our neighborhood we'd be talking about. From my other perspective, while I don't have children anymore, the cut-through, I am concerned with people flying through there, and I'm sure some of my neighbors can kinda talk to that. And I'm not sure how heavy that would be, but it's a question from our perspective. The third question from my perspective, again, is... And it kinda goes back to the community again, and our side of the community, and that is the environment in terms of the Bird Sanctuary, the walking capabilities, and what it does to our ability to both access, which if I understand, Mr. Vars' access was down there, but also people from other parts of the neighborhood having to come through our neighborhood, or come through our yard, actually, to get through that. I'm not sure how that would work, or would they have to walk all the way down and then all the way over? So those are kind of some issues that we'd be concerned with in terms of water, in terms of how it's keeping it is with our overall development, and how it affects the Bird Sanctuary and people's access, as well as traffic.
Okay.
I'm... Just to add on the water part of it.
Wait, wait.
You have to go to the mic.
Yeah, you have to use the mic, otherwise it isn't picked up.
You wanna give my mic?
I'm Grace Lee. I'm Hugh Lee's wife. Again, we live at twelve ninety-one.
Use the... Get closer to him.
We live right at twelve ninety-one Conifer Cove, which is adjacent to where the water reservoir.
Gotta stay by the mic, though.
Pardon me?
Gotta stay by that mic. You walk away and lose it.
Sorry. So we're adjacent, right, to where the water reservoir would be? But to add on to what my husband said, I just wanna make sure about the elevation of the development that would be going next to us, that it's not higher than our property, because obviously then the water's gonna come towards our property. So I'm just concerned that that whole development is not higher than the existing Conifer Cove properties.
Okay. Yeah, that's generally... That'll be engineering detail, and he'll explain that. And no water will actually run off of that parcel, onto your parcel. And that's why they'll end up with swales and so on and so on. He'll explain it to you. Okay, now, is there anyone else who should make a comment? Sure, just give us your name and address.
My name is Eric Holtz, twelve ninety-three Foothill Circle. And my first and major concern is, what's in the ground back there? What's underneath the soil? Is it rock or slate? And my main concern, is there gonna be blasting? Because obviously, if they have to... If the construction company has to dynamite or use any type of blasting techniques, that could affect foundations in that whole neighborhood. So that's my main concern. If there's... Is there gonna be a test to see what's underneath there? And make sure that, you know, there's no dynamite or blasting?
Okay.
My first concern. We talked about the retention ponds. We know with retention ponds come the geese. With the geese come the feces and the mess they make. That's a concern of mine. That whole area is green space. I spent years trying to track the Baltimore Orioles back to my yard, the Bluebirds, everything. All of that is gonna be destroyed. The whole habitat is gonna be destroyed. There's fox, there's kewies, there's everything back there, and, you know, that's one of my concerns as well. And then, on the application, there is a question, you know, will it increase traffic? Well, obviously, if you cut to two fifty, the traffic is gonna be increased. Anybody who lives at Holly Conifer Cove neighborhood is gonna cut down Conifer Cove now instead of Mill Creek Line. And I don't live on Conifer Cove, but if I did, and I had children, I'd be very concerned with the increased traffic pattern that's gonna come through there.
You do understand that the road ended right there on that property, though, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The intent of that was to keep going through.
I'm sure that was the intention fifty years ago or forty years ago.
And as far as your other comment about being forever wild, no, it isn't.
No, I know it's not.
The only thing is if you buy it.
No, I know it's not forever wild. I'm just saying, the development is gonna destroy the wildlife in there.
May not destroy it. It'll relocate it slightly.
Correct. Away from everybody else that lives there. It's gonna be relocated away from us, all the wildlife. So that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else we should do?
Deborah White, twelve seventy-nine Holly Road. Concerns, particularly, I know it is not forever wild, but the Bird Sanctuary Trail, over time, has been impinged by the neighborhood, and it is such a gift to the community that I hate to see more impinging on that space there and the wildlife that lives there. I also don't know the plans here, but seems to me that most of the development within Webster, there is clearcutting and then building, and given that the age of our neighborhood and the beauty of the trees and all the foliage, that if clearcut would not fit, would even more destroy the habitat of the animals. And so I'm very concerned about clearcutting that. I don't know, again, what the plans are, but pulling off the topsoil, selling that to people, it just changes the whole feeling of what we're about in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cecilia Robello, twelve ninety-one Foothill Circle. In nineteen eighty-six, we were over in the town office building when Mr. Randisisi wanted to develop his property of Bell Arbor. I was there. He wanted to dynamite. I don't know if that is the case. I'm gonna stand with what I stood back in nineteen eighty-six. If dynamiting has to occur, the builders have to put up a bond with the town to protect the people and our homes. They have a right to build. They don't have a right to destroy our property and our property values. Seven years later, after I went up against Mr. Randisisi, he built what I suggested at that meeting, which were patio homes. I think the whole neighborhood, if dynamiting has to occur, we will all concur that a bond has to be put up. And like in nineteen eighty-six, when the board approved that, it needs to be done again.
Okay, thank you. My guess, I don't know what the requirements are, but there would definitely have to be a license and so on for any blasting on the site. That would be a definite.
Don't destroy my property.
Hi, my name's Steve Yehudik, and I live at twelve eighty-six Conifer Cove.
What was your name, I'm sorry?
Steve Yehudik.
Okay.
Just, I concur with everything that's been said up here. I'm not gonna repeat all that. But I did want to try to address one question, hopefully as pertinent. I had heard that these homes were being built not for individual sale, but for long-term lease. So there wouldn't be permanent homeowners in those homes. I don't know if that has any impact on zoning or planning process, but I'll ask the company to comment on that, and maybe you could comment on that as well.
Okay. Maybe you had open... You can address these questions. You guys have all had, so... All right, is that it? Anyone else? Pretty good for now? Okay. Peter, you wanna... You wanna address anything?
I guess what I'll do is I'll just address it kind of as an overall response in the fact that, you know, this is the purpose of this evening. As a sketch plan review is for us to present the initial concept and then use it as a mechanism to receive feedback so that we know what the key and critical issues are as we prepare the formal application. And as part of that formal application process, there are several requirements we know we have to meet and address, and those include drainage, stormwater management being designed for the town standards and the New York State DEC standards. There will be soil and geotechnical investigations to understand the soil properties of the overall property, if there's presence of groundwater, bedrock, all of that, and thus what engineering design has to be completed to address that. Point being is, there is... And then, there is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which the planning board will take the lead on. And as you know, that process requires the board to take a hard look at all of the various factors that are raised during the process. We have the responsibility, as the applicant, to address those to the board's satisfaction to show that there should not be the potential for any significant environmental impact. So my point being is, this is all good information for us to use to know what are the key and important issues, just like I assume, I... Like I say, I assume, I know it will occur. We will receive the PRC memo, or a minutes, which will identify the staff issues. We'll take comments we've heard this evening from the board members also as it relates to density, lot standard drainage, such that we use all of that to put that into framing the overall preliminary subdivision application that will come back before this board to address those comments and propose the subdivision on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Peter.
Sir, we did not address the last question as to how this is...
You can't, ma'am... You can't be from the audience talking anymore. We're done with it. We gave you the privilege to speak. Again, this isn't a public hearing, so let him... There'll be another meeting in the future. That'll be preliminary hearing. Preliminary is a public hearing. That's when anyone can speak. We're doing this just to get some information to see where people stand, that's all. So I wanna pick a, you know, a contact thing and debatable situation. So if you can hold a little end, thanks. All right. Okay, Peter, thank you. Look, I guess right now, the first thing we should be looking at as board is...
Is this what it means?
To develop this as cluster development or standard R-three development?
I don't believe that this falls on the... What we intend to be a cluster development.
I'm in agreement with that.
I just... I believe it should just go to standard development. I agree with you that the stormwater management should be in one lot, and not spread over four or five lots. But this is... This is not... But I believe we want to see it for cluster development.
Okay. Anybody else have commented on it?
I'm just looking at the stormwater management here, where it's...
Well, I wanna... That won't go to stormwater. I wanna stick with type of development initially.
Yeah, standard or cluster?
Either cluster or standard development.
Cluster... Cluster, you know, we intend to cluster to give us a major amount of green space.
Yeah, correct.
This is not... This is...
No, I think we're in agreement with that. That's... That was... That was the consensus at the PRC. Same thing. Any of you can call us down there?
How do you feel?
I'd go with standard.
Standard?
Yeah.
So I think everybody's in... Okay, so we... Last one, we're gonna do that. So regarding to the size, they'll be the standard-sized lots. They won't be the, you know, cluster-type development, okay? The next question, now, go ahead. That's... Now you're talking about drainage. The way it's shown in the standard development, it's showing it on, you know, like a little over two of the lots.
Yeah.
That... Years ago, unless it... Unless that became a homeowners association. Unless that became a homeowners association or something where it's maintained, you know, then we allowed it on a couple of lots like that. But it's been the practice to one lot for the drainage. So the lot... The way you've got it actually designed, Peter, and your cluster development would work, but with the standard-sized lots. I think that's the direction. Would you guys agree with that?
Yeah.
I think that's where we...
My only thing is the location of it. If it's on one lot like that, as it's shown on the cluster plan, it's just to me that looks like it's too close to the road. Usually, those detention ponds are kind of in the back or on the road.
No, no, no. No, you want it there. They won't... It's gonna have to be accessible for the town. They wanna have as close to the road as possible. Where they have access to it.
I understand.
Yeah, there's a wide road.
Usually, there's...
This is standard.
A road down to them?
No.
Okay.
No, this is not standard like that. The one on Bay Road, oh my God, we can go out and end. The new development proposed for Salt Road, it was... It's... It was that whole length of the Salt Road there.
Yeah.
You know, so that's... You know, that's a definite. They wanna have Highway Department wants to have access to that, by all means. All right, so the gist of it, I guess, would be standard lots, drainage, and one of the... One of the lots... I guess, would be standard lots, drainage, and one of the, one of the lots, basically all the drainage would be on one, one lot, actually, that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I ask one question about that? And I, we'd be willing to take it to the PRC. However, you know, obviously with citing a drainage facility, topography is a, is one of the controlling factors, because obviously you want to locate these facilities at the low end of the property.
Right.
Where the current drainage patterns are. There is the possibility actually that this facility could actually be split by the right-of-way. My point being is, what I mean by that is it actually could be on the north and the south side, because of the way that drainage pattern is, which is a southeast to northwest drainage pattern. So when you say put it all on one lot, we may end up putting it on both sides of the right-of-way. And that could actually function better, but we'd be willing to take that to the PRC and walk that through with them. I just don't want to get...
If you did that, Peter, so like, you have like two ponds, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, so one would be on the north side, one on the south side?
And they'd probably be connected by a pipe under the road.
Excuse me, I don't think that would be an issue, because then, on the one side of the road, that could be with lot number one, we'll call it.
Right.
And if it's on the south side, it might be with lot number five.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Just so that, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that would be an issue. Dave, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, you'd line up with the...
Paul, what do you think? Something like that?
Well, I think we just have to get more information.
Yeah, but I mean, the theory of, yeah. In other words, it's not stretching across two separate, two lots, you know what I mean, or three lots.
Yeah, the, the individual green infrastructure that's shown on the lots there, I think is not realistic, you know?
Flap. I, I'll disagree with that in the fact that it is a standard required prac- or recommended practice of doing a rain garden or a, an individual lot. They actually prefer it to be on the actual lot itself. It's just our typical practices are to consolidate them into a single facility. It's, and the point is, you can do either or, so.
I just think there needs to be more information related to the, to the green to look at that.
Yeah, and you say, you bring that into the PRC.
That's what we would do.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, in regards...
Basically, the theory of that, to me, kinda unique, but that actually concerns a buffer between the current residential also.
Correct. Yes, it would.
And what, and that's the reason we've done this years ago, when it's had two or three lots originally, done like that years ago. What happened? You took care of it, I didn't take care of mine, and we got into issues and the town got involved. This way, if it's on one lot, that, that homeowner generally takes care of the pond.
Mm-hmm. Right. I, no, I agree, yes.
Besides, it wouldn't be an issue. I don't, okay, we're good with that.
Yep.
You fellows agree with that, all right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, anything else we need?
No.
It's, again, it's just a sketch plan, so. All right, I guess we're, anybody else any questions or?
No, I think we gave them all the information.
What's that, Dave?
I think we gave them all the information.
Yeah, yep. Those were the biggest concerns. All right, good. Thank you, Peter.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, boy.
Okay.
The final application for tonight, meeting eighteen twenty Tapper Trail, accessory structure with roof-mounted solar panels. Located at eighteen twenty Tapper Trail, the applicant, Jamie Newtown, is requesting preliminary final approval, which includes a public hearing associated with the construction of a twenty-four by forty-foot, parentheses, nine sixty-square-foot accessory structure consisting of a covered pavilion, poolhouse, and storage area with roof-mounted solar panels on a three-point zero-one acre parcel located in a large lot, single-family residential district under sections one fifty-five dash five, subsection D, subsection four, three fifty dash thirteen, and three fifty dash thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster. Mr. Newtown?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The aisle, sir?
No, the armory is...
Oh, no, I didn't hear that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Jamie Newtown, eighteen twenty Tapper Trail. Here this evening seeking approval for a thirty, I'm sorry, a twenty-four by forty-foot accessory structure. This building did go in front of the zoning board on November fourteenth, I believe it was, and was approved for the setback variances of forty-five feet. The structure will be used kind of multipurpose. Would have an open pavilion, just a covered roof area, which is approximately twenty feet, four feet wide by twelve feet, and then the next two sections would basically be indoor kind of poolhouse, house the pool pump equipment, have some furniture in it, and some cabinets in that space. And then the, the back space, twenty-four foot wide by approximately fourteen foot, would become storage space and house some of the materials and things that are in the current shed. The proposal would be to eliminate the small, what I call the doghouse, uh, pump house, pool pump house, that is shown in the graphic, just to the north of the fence, and then replace the shed, that is twenty-one foot from the property line, and that would ultimately be eliminated. The, just a few things to note reflective of the surrounding properties. There are approximately ten different structures within about a three-quarter mile radius that have, I should say residences, that have multiple accessory structures on them. Those are seventeen seventy, seventeen seventy-one Lake Road, Eight Eagles Landing, one fifteen Basket Road, two thirty-five Basket Road, two oh five County Line Road, that's Windmill Farms, two twenty-five County Line Road, eighteen twenty-seven Woodard Road, eighteen forty-nine Woodard Road, eighteen fifty Woodard Road, three fifty Basket Road, and four thirty-six slash four forty Basket Road. All of those have two accessory structures that are larger than what I'm proposing.
Did your homework on that one, didn't you?
What's that?
You did your homework on that one?
Yes, I tried to. So all of those have structures on them, multiple accessory structures exceeding the square footage of what I'm proposing between my existing accessory structure and the new structure. In addition to that, eighteen fourteen Trellis Circle, so this would be more immediate, within a tenth of a mile of me or less, eighteen fourteen Trellis Circle has a poolhouse, cabana, and storage building on it. That's my immediate neighbor to the west. Seventeen ninety-five Trellis Circle, which is part of the Woodard subdivision that I live in, has a forty by forty or sixteen hundred square foot pole barn, and they could also have up to a two hundred square foot shed, which would be eighteen hundred square feet in total. Eighteen twenty-five Tapper Trail has a thirty by forty pole barn at twelve hundred square feet, plus could add another two hundred square foot in a shed if they so desire, for fourteen hundred square feet. My proposal falls just in the middle of those two. These are immediate neighbors, I should add, at nine hundred and sixty square feet plus seven hundred and twenty square feet, for sixteen eighty total square feet between the two structures. If I were to compare against the other ten that I listed off, it's pale in comparison to size of those properties that have two accessory structures on them. All the building materials will be made to match the house, proposing a black metal roof structure, and then a siding, probably not going to be vinyl, it's probably going to be a vertical, I forget the exact name, metal standing seam, I think is the verbiage that they use today. Standing seam metal, at least on the main front facade. It will have brick or a fake stone structure on the front facade that will match the outdoor kitchen. That's immediately outside on my patio, so it'll all blend together and be consistent in nature. Just to note that this structure is pretty much hidden on all sides. You certainly would not see it from the private drive on Tapper Trail. My neighbor to the west would not be able to see it because I've got a significant amount of trees, over two hundred trees, on the western property boundary and, pardon my, what's her name? There's a significant hedgerow bordering the property to the west, I'm sorry, to the east, Saranowak, and the property to the north of me, I believe totals about twenty-four acres between the residence and a secondary lot owned by the same owner, and they are at an elevation difference, I'm gonna guess, of about fifteen feet. So their vantage point looking from ground level or grade is up. I'm actually doing a, what I would consider making an improvement, because I could have a shed ten by twenty, five foot off the lot line, and I'd just like to note that I do have a variance for the eve height on that shed today, so I could literally plot a shed ten foot by twenty foot long, five foot off the property line. I could also put a six foot high fence on the property line and paint it any color of my desire, which I'd be glad to do. Otherwise, I would do neither of those, and I would build this thirty, or twenty-four by forty-foot structure forty-five foot off the property line, and at a vantage point from the neighbor to the north, they'd never see it. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, you certainly are prepared. So what, the variance was what, just for the extra building on the site?
Yeah, second accessory structure. Note that there's no condition on that variance that was received on November fourteenth. The only conditions proposed, are posed on that variance were planning board approval, seeking governmental permits, and no living space or commercial operations out of that, which, if I don't get the size tonight, I can still construct an accessory structure, a second accessory structure of twenty by twenty-five to meet the five hundred and not need your approval, plus I could put up a oversized shed at ten by twenty for, for two hundred square foot. So essentially, I can achieve what I want without seeking your approval, I'd say.
No, I think what you're proposing is realistic for what your uses are. So I don't have an issue with that. There was, oh, the, okay, this, well, it is a public hearing. So, ma'am, this is a public hearing, so now if you wish to speak, you can go up and, up to the microphone? Did you want to speak?
He's offering.
I had a trouble here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, we're good.
I'm Cheryl Seccone. I believe we're the northern neighbor. We have had a lot of trouble with drainage ever since that, those houses were put up there. The, there used to be an orchard, never had any problem with flooding. Ever since then, our property supposedly, they raised the taxes, say it's worth more, it's trashed. I'm concerned about drainage from a roof on a structure that size, and also I'm concerned about glare from the metal roof. Probably the solar panels would aim the other way, you know, the southwest way, but a metal roof gives a lot of glare, and how I know about that is a previous owner of that house put a shed right back on the lot line, put an aluminum boat behind it. From our kitchen window in the afternoon, when I was trying to work at the kitchen sink, it was terrible. And then he put like, like an aluminum silver tarp over it, which was even shinier, and, and it flapped in the breeze so noisily, all winter, all summer, everything. So I went up to the town hall today, tried to look, asked for a map to see how this, this will, you know, how close it will be to our property, but I couldn't, they couldn't show me a map. Our property sits at an angle, it's hard to tell, you know, would we be able to see it or not, but I'm also really worried about runoff from a roof that size, especially a metal roof. I mean, you know that the downspouts are gonna head our way. You know the ground is already saturated and they're, because they're higher than us. It's not just stormwater runoff, it's, you know, all the water people use every day and put into that hill, and if they ever have to drain the pool, I mean, normal backwashing probably wouldn't be a problem, but if they ever have to drain that pool, you know it's gonna go right through our house. In the back of our garage, down through our crawl space where our furnace is lying on its side, right through the carpeted lower level, that's what it does. Ever since they took that orchard out of there and put all those houses up there. So I'm, I'm really concerned about drainage and also glare off of a metal roof.
Your pool is, well, okay, it's, okay, thank you. We'll, we'll have him address that. You already have a pool there, don't you, Jim?
The pool's been there since about twelve, twelve, probably fourteen years.
The, just, just... No, I have no issues with the pool. And just to note, I know this, that you've swum
up to my house before and chatted about. You, you swum up to my house probably about five, seven years ago. You, you were asking what I was doing, where I was doing some weed whipping out back.
I think it was a lot longer than that.
Yeah, maybe it was ten years ago. I was weed whipping out back. Long story short, I, I had told the lady, I'm sorry, your name, Cheryl, prior to that, I reestablished that property in Apple Orchard. I've got over two hundred and twenty apple trees on that property today that were stripped from that property when they built the development, Woodard subdivision back in nineteen, I'm sorry, about two thousand and one-ish. So I reestablished, you know, sources to extract groundwater and to mitigate some of the issues related to stormwater. In addition to the Apple Orchard, I planted at least another forty to fifty trees around the property, so it's well-treed.
Yeah, sure.
It's certainly, the orientation of the roof is, it's a slight north, northwest, orientation southwest, or southeast northwest, I guess, is how you would picture it. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how much of the roof you'd really see. You're gonna see the, if anything, you would see the rear peak at, at, at most.
I'd really love to see on the map which way it angles, and also which way the downspouts could be going.
Yeah, the, the downspouts would more than likely tie into the drainage system around my house, which goes down to the stormwater retention pond on the bottom of my driveway. So nothing would go to the north.
Because we are stuck with a creek and a wetland on our property.
All right, ma'am, okay, we, we can't, we can't have just a discussion back and forth. The, the drainage, I think what the applicant is saying, the, all his, I can't really see her, she's impacted us.
You can stop by up here, he's, he's talking to you.
I can't believe himself who's talking.
Yeah, Mr. Fraschani's speaking.
No, what I'm saying is, right now, he's gonna address, he's addressed that, where the water's going. So your concerns about water should not impact you whatsoever. He's draining that water into his own detention pond, so that'll be directed not near you. As far as the roof, you're not putting a silver...
Everything comes down the hill toward our house.
Well, I know. I own the thirty-three acres right next to you, which is partially in Farm Field, and I, so I own the property, you just know of the, thirty-three acres. And I know how wet it is in there, because I tried to do some, I tried to plant some crops in there.
It goes hard from this...
Oh, I know where it comes from.
Ever since they put those houses up there, it goes in the back of our property.
Okay, okay, okay. We got that. We understood that. But that isn't from this project. That, we don't, we don't have that. Hold on, we're not, let me say we're not, ma'am, please.
I would never drain it to the north. I have plenty of red stormwater retention at the bottom of my property.
This application is in this evening for approval here. Not any other ones. So wherever your water's coming from, isn't coming from his property. All right, so we can't deal with it. No, 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 don't, don't talk yet. Please, don't talk yet. Please, don't talk yet. Wait. His application is in here this evening. That's the only one we're dealing with. Now, if there's water draining onto your property from somewhere else, that's something else that has to be dealt with. But that has nothing to do with this application.
It's hard to start adding any more water.
This will not be adding any more water. Let's get away from the water, ma'am. The roof you're putting is, is that, is that chrome, is it silver?
No, it's, it's black.
Okay, so, okay, so there's no... Okay, so there's no
No, it's a, it's a black, black metal, metal roof.
So there's nothing, yeah, okay. I just wanted to
Right, no.
I was gonna bring that up too. We don't have shiny
No, there's spade of steel roof.
There's, they're hot and cold.
Alright, we're good with that. Um, anybody, any other, has anyone else? There isn't anyone else in here, so. Alright, then we're gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Anybody, any concerns? He explained everything, went to the zoning board, got his approvals there. It's a simple addition, really, to what, what he's, uh, what he has there now.
And I'm willing to accept the condition, which typically my past life on the plan chair or zoning board would have included it. I'm willing to accept the condition for the removal of the shed. So if this is granted, it's up to you.
It, it's a good shed?
It's probably gonna be relocated to my neighbor to the east. We'll leave that up to you.
I don't have an issue with it. I mean, you've got, it's not like you've got a confined lot. You're infringing on anybody else or anything, so.
Three acres.
Yeah. Alright, anybody, any questions, concerns?
No.
It's a nice setup.
Yeah, it looks good.
Interesting, too. You have your own drainage going to your pond?
Well, the, the way that the apron ties in around my house, it goes down to the stormwater pond, which is at the bottom of, uh, that dead-end road, which is Tabere Trail. So essentially, a majority of that stormwater retention pond sits on my property. My house elevation difference has got me at least, I'm gonna guess somewhere around twenty feet from that stormwater retention pond to the, um, the, the garage parade.
It's a good draw, okay.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah. Alright, um, we gotta do a secret on this.
I've got it.
Have you got it?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay, go ahead.
Motion for secret for eighteen twenty Tabere Trail accessory structure with roof-mounted solar panels. The town council planning board considers the request by applicant Jamie Newtown to construct a twenty-four by forty, nine hundred sixty square foot accessory structure consisting of a covered pavilion, pool house, and storage area with roof-mounted solar panels on a three-point-zero-one acre parcel having SBL number zero five one dot zero one dash one dash five five located at eighteen twenty Tabere Trail. The planning board classifies the proposed action to be a type-two action under section six one seven dot five C, section nine of the state environmental review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good with that. Okay, uh, motion for, for, again, this is preliminary. Motion for approval for preliminary? Oh, Jamie, is there a, um, just as presented, or is this, you, you have a number drawing to, or no?
Uh, I, I would say as presented. I do not have a number to
Okay, alright, that's good enough. That's the one that will go in then.
Yep.
Somebody on, Dave, you have a question?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for, uh, preliminary approval for accessory building. At eighteen twenty Tabere Trail. The lot is restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented on the plan. Placement of the building should conform to all setback requirements. Building should not be placed near to the front property line and the rear line of the footprint of the main building or residence upon the lot. No point in the building will be higher than any existing structure. No commercial use shall occur on the parcel. Accessory building should be used for personal use only, as defined by the town code. Significant construction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board, to expire on December fifth, twenty twenty-four. You comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. All site work, and there's no site work. That's a motion.
Okay, a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second?
Mister Malta?
Aye.
Mister Giorgina?
Aye.
Mister Kusel?
Aye.
Mister Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Bright?
Aye.
Mister Frashani?
Aye. Okay, we're good with that. On the final, tomorrow here.
Make a motion for final approval for accessory building at eighteen twenty Tabere Trail. Condition on all the preliminary approval, um, statements.
Okay, the drawing that's submitted, right?
Drawing, yes, yeah, I submitted.
Alright, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We're good, okay. Good to go, bud.
Alright, thank you.
We'll see you later, Jim. Alright, anything else we have to, uh?
We have the meeting minutes for November seventh. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Yeah, there you go, alright.
That's it.
Alright, before we go, we're, we're gonna lose somebody from our board here.
This is a teary goodbye.
What's that?
Is it a teary goodbye? Are you gonna cry?
Run out to dinner, it's not ready.
We can do that, we can do that.
Why are you supposed to tell her?
We can do that. No, just wish you good luck
Thank you.
With your future move. And, uh, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good good having you here.
Good being here.
Wouldn't be the action of the town board.
Yeah. Okay, I guess that's it. We're all set for tonight.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.